I'll call the meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Mayor Peacock.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the February 20th, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of February 20th, 2023.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
The Veterans Commission appointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to advise and consent the appointment of Daniel Marson to the Veterans Commission?
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Put it out. I swear you in.
I stand today.
I, Daniel Marson.
Have been appointed to the office.
Have been appointed to the office.
Of the Veterans Commission.
Of the Veterans Commission.
And bill to our work.
And bill to our work.
In the counties of Cook and Will, as was said.
In the county of Cook and Will, as was said.
Do so and swear.
Do so and swear.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That will faithfully discharge your duties.
And faithfully discharge your duties.
Of the office of the Veterans Commission.
Of the office of the Veterans Commission.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
And I want to thank you very much for stepping up to volunteer for the Veterans Commission. The Veterans Commission does a lot of great work, whether it's our Memorial Day, our Veterans Day, our Fishing Day that we do for some of the folks down at Mantino, also, you know, obviously, the golf outing where we raise a lot of money, and the monthly care packs which we send out. So, thank you very much for stepping up.
Community Pride Award, St. Michael's School's 6B Girls Volleyball Team.
Yeah, go ahead and bring all the girls in, and then we'll also take pictures. Normally, we would do it before this, but we had some other hearings, so we'll make sure we give you time to do that. So, I want to take this time to issue the Community Pride Award to the St. Michael's 6B Girls Volleyball Team. They won the SCC Championship, and I'll be happy to provide the Community Pride Award to them. I want to thank you all, all you girls, I want to congratulate you all for all your hard work, because it's not easy to do, and to win a championship is fantastic. I also want to thank your coaches for their hard work as well, because they give all their time for you to get really good at what you do. And then you should thank all your parents for taking you every place, taking you to all of these events and everything else, because without them, you don't make it to all of those places. So, congratulations, well-deserved, and great work. And I'm going to come down and give you this, and then we'll take some pictures.
Don't kneel down, though, I will put you in the picture. Stay standing. All right, like right here, please. All right, that's good. Gotcha. Thanks.
We've been congratulating a lot of cheerleaders lately.
Accounts payable approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from February 21st, 2023, through March 6th, 2023, in the amount of $1,513,852.41.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for February 17, 2023, approval. Item B, Sportsplex Locker Room Renovation Project, ITB 23-008 rejection. Item C, Sportsplex and FLC HVAC Improvement Project, ITB 23-009. Item E, O'Brien v. Village of Orland Park. Item F, An Ordinance Amending Title IX, Chapter IX, Section VII of the Orland Park Village Code Regarding Parking Restrictions Recommended, amended ordinance. Item G, Pete's Fresh Market Development Security Bond Request. I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through C, E, and G.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Give me one second here. Item F, An Ordinance Amending Title IX, Chapter IX, Section VII of the Orland Park Village Code Regarding Parking Restrictions Recommended, amended ordinance.
I will entertain a motion to postpone to a date certain, to March 20th, Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
ILEP Tier Two Reaccreditation Presentation.
Point of order. We have item D on consent agenda.
Item D, we tabled. We tabled at the next meeting, so it'll show up at a future date. Eliot, presentation.
Brian and his team could come up. Come behind me. Good evening, Mayor. Chief Eric Rossi couldn't be with us, but I will acknowledge him and his folks tonight.
He's on vacation in Quantico.
I heard. My name is Mark Maitan. I'm currently the second Vice President for the Illinois Chiefs, and it's my privilege this evening to present the Orland Park Police Department with their reaccreditation for their ILEP Tier Two accreditation. So, for those that were around four years ago, understand what ILEP is, but for those that don't, and I'll talk a little bit about it so you understand what kind of an achievement this is. The Illinois Chiefs created ILEP about 10 years ago as a way to help departments demonstrate to their communities their unwavering commitment to achieve the highest professional standards. So, it's really more than anything, a demonstration to the Board and the community that the Orland Park Police Department is following the national best practice of standards, and the auditing process that they undergo kind of tests whether the department is operating in compliance with the standards that they have set themselves. So, here's a little bit of the benefits to ILEP. It's improved police effectiveness, identification of problem areas, it develops the documentation of performance, it decreases insurance premiums, it decreases liability potential, which should be of interest to you all, and most importantly, it demonstrates to the community that its police department runs a state-of-the-art operation. A little bit about the process itself. To achieve Tier Two ILEP accreditation, the department had to demonstrate compliance with 181 professional standards covering four critical policy areas. And I will say that there's currently 54 agencies that are ILEP accredited in Illinois, and only 20 of those 54 are Tier Two, the rest are Tier One, which is 67 standards. So, this is quite an achievement. So, it requires really a department-wide commitment to excellence. So, Chief Rossi and his team spent several months preparing with the assessors to review the policies and procedures and reports, and I will personally acknowledge Lieutenant David Zolkowski, who is the actual ILEP coordinator, and so he's probably lived this for the last year, as you go through this, and to make sure that the department achieves this standard. So, once accredited, that their accreditation date was December 9th, 2022, it'll be good for four more years, and then you'll, David will still be around, but we'll be going through this one more time. So, again, on behalf of the Illinois Chiefs, congratulations to Eric Rossi and his team in achieving the 2022 Tier Two ILEP accreditation. So, we have a platform, and I'll read it. It says, "This Illinois Accreditation Council verifies that the Orland Park Police Department has policies, procedures, and daily routines that achieve the Tier Two level of Illinois accreditation. This signifies that the department is in compliance with the professional standards of modern law enforcement," and it's a great achievement. So, I'll present it to the folks, and where's your camera? There you are. Why don't you, we go here, and we'll present it to David?
Yeah.
Can we look right here? Perfect. Thank you.
And I want to thank our entire department, I want to thank the chief for coming in and presenting this. I'm biased, but a little biased, but we have the best department in the state, and others could learn from our example on how we do things. And you've heard me say that many, many times since I've been mayor, and I will repeat what I've said many, many times as well. This is not just a commitment from this board, it's commitment from the previous board, it's commitment from the previous mayor and boards before that. We have all placed an emphasis on public safety, and, you know, want to thank all of you for all the hard work and effort. Any other comments from the Board? Thank you very much, guys.
Storm Basin Stewartships Additional Site Work.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the stewardships of two additional sites, Kingsport and Plumtree, and additional work to be performed at Pine Wood North 1 and 2, and Brook Hill Pond 1 and 2, to V3 Companies of Woodridge, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $168,855, an increase of $32,530 from the original $136,325 in fiscal '23, and Board approved budget amounts for fiscal '24 through fiscal '27, and to approve contingency for the needed prescribed burns and supplemental seeding of $10,000 for Davy Resource Group, $10,000 for PISO and Associates, $20,000 for Cardno, and $35,000 for V3 Companies for a total not to exceed $75,000 in fiscal year '23, and Board approved budget amount in fiscal '24 through '27, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any questions or comments? What I'll say is that we did an entire review on our ponds as well, just like we have done with our streets, and our sidewalks, and our parks, and our vehicles, and everything else, and we were woefully behind, and we have a plan over five years to catch up and get everything up to at least an average standard, and that's the goal. And I was actually at, and I just happened to look, I happened to be in a neighborhood this weekend, and someone came back and showed me their pond, and they wanted to know why there was much clearing work done. Fortunately, I've got a little bit of experience with this type of stuff, and I said, "I'm pretty sure you're on the list to get, you know, redone and put some seed and everything else," because it was obviously pretty barren, and that was the plum tree one, so I see it's on here on the list. So, a lot of folks with their ponds that are, you know, a lot of erosion, there's no native plants around them, that's what we're doing, and it's to try to control erosion. And there were some concerns that the wildlife was leaving because of all of the invasive species we took out. I said, "Don't worry, it'll return," and then someone, we have actual native species there. Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Authorize the sale of one plow truck to the city of Blue Island, Illinois.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Trustee Healy.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Authorizing the Sale of Personal Property, Plow Truck Owned by the Village of Orland Park, Illinois, to the City of Blue Island, Illinois."
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Schusler Park Renovations, 14609 Poplar Road.
Mr. Mayor. Trustee Radeszewski.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action as presented for case 2022-0921, also known as Schusler Park Renovations, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Granting a Special Use for Distributes of a Non-Title Wetland for Recreational Facility Lighting and a Variance for Parking Lot Landscape Islands, Schusler Park, 14609 Poplar Road."
Second. And I realize some people may be here to speak. Nobody signed in, correct?
Uh-uh.
All right, if there's anyone here to speak, you have three minutes. If not, the Board will discuss. If you'd like to speak, then please come up here and state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Suzie O'Flores, and I live at 1771 Highwood Drive, Orland Park, Illinois. And when I walked in, I didn't really get to hear too much. The microphones are kind of low.
Are you here to speak about the Schusler Park renovations?
I'm sorry?
Are you here to speak about the Schusler Park renovations?
No, I.
So, we have comments for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you go in, if you go up there, there's a sheet to sign up, and you can give it to George over here, and he'll get it to the clerk.
Okay, this is my first time.
Okay? Yeah, I'm just opening it up if anyone wants to talk about Schusler Park.
Okay, now, can I address the comments to?
You can address whatever you want. You have three minutes, but it's at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
As on public comments. Right now, I'm opening it up to anyone who wants to talk about Schusler Park.
Thank you.
Okay? You're welcome. Any comments from the Board? So, Schusler Park renovations, for those of you who don't know the history of Schusler Park, in the early '60s, Schusler Park was actually built by the residents. It was donated, and the reason it's named Schusler Park is because the mayor previous to Mayor Dugan was named Walter Schusler, and he arranged, this was before we had requirements to give park space for development, so he arranged for the Fernway development that came in to donate property to the village for a park. And also, him and trustee Dugan at the time arranged to get businesses to donate materials for fencing, for sod, and all that, and as many of you know, we had a sod farm here in town. So, they did all that, and the residents built it. Of course, it was not engineered, it was the 1960s, and it was also the low point of Fernway that anyone knows. And so, we know that there's a lot of flooding issues, there's a lot of water issues, it makes the park unusable. I can tell you, when I was growing up, that was when the best, that's where the best field was, that was the only, one of two big fields for Pony League games. So, there's a long history there, but clearly, it was done by the residents, it wasn't engineered, and there's flooding issues. So, this project will be a great addition for a couple of reasons. One is, half of it is focused on stormwater and flooding, and so it's going to provide, expand the pond to hold more water. It's also going to have turf fields, which, because they're turf, because of what's underneath the turf, you can actually store water under the turf on an artificial turf field. So, we'll actually be providing extra capacity for that as well. So, that's going to make that whole park way more usable all the time. And then additionally, with a turf field, it's going to be very beneficial for, it's going to be the home for the pioneers for football, which means that when they have rain and everything, they won't destroy a field when they practice. And then also, it's going to open up for other fields, like, for other sports like soccer and lacrosse, to use at other times. So, we'll have a couple of fields that even in bad weather can still be used. So, it's a great addition to the village and a great upgrade, and we saw from all of the, all of the studies that we did, this was the one park that people thought needed the most work, and they're right, it did, which is why it's been focused to do that. So, I'm glad we can get this done. Call the roll.
Trustee Radeszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock. Cube Smart Self-Storage, 66 Orland Square Drive.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action regarding case number 2022-0290, also known as Cube Smart Self-Storage Facility, as presented in the staff report with the following amendments if necessary, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Granting Special Uses for a Planned Development and for a Self-Storage Facility with Modification, Cube Smart Self-Storage, 66 Orland Square Drive."
Is there any presentation here or no?
The petitioner is here to make presentation, present.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bridgette O'Keefe. I hope you can hear me okay.
Can hear you loud and clear.
If I want to change slides, how do I, just say, "Next slide"? Perfect, okay. So, my name is, for the record, is Bridgette O'Keefe. I'm a partner at Daspen &amp; Amen. I'm here tonight on behalf of Pearl Orland Storage LLC. I'm accompanied by Stephen Schwartz, who's a principal with Pearl Orland Storage LLC, and Tyler Manick, who's a partner with Shane Banks, who represents the owner of the property, Rialto Capital. In the interest of time, we just have a very brief presentation, and then we'd like to, you know, turn it over to any questions you all may have. Today, we're talking about the property located at 66 Orland Square Drive. This is a one zoning lot that currently is a shopping center occupied by Gizmos, UFC Gym, and Skyzone. We're talking today about the property that formerly held the Carson's Furniture Store that's been vacant for a number of years. Here is a list of the approvals that are required, which I don't need to repeat, but basically, looking for special use, planned development, special use for self-storage, and approval of a plat of subdivision, and then I understand is a separate matter, there'll be a resolution to recommend approval of a Class 7C. Next slide, please. What I'd like to do right now is take a moment, introduce you to Steve Schwartz, who's the applicant, who's going to just give you one or two minutes on the operation, and then I could just run you quickly through the plans, and we should be able to wrap it up. So, Mr. Schwartz?
Stephen Schwartz, Pearl Orland Storage LLC, appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening for hopefully our approval before you on this project, as recommended by the Plan Commission. In terms of the site itself, as Bridgette had mentioned, it's a seven-acre-plus site that you're obviously all familiar with across the street, housing UFC Gym, Gizmos, and Skyzone, and we're looking to occupy and redevelop and convert the former Cube Smart, sorry, occupy and convert the former Carson's Furniture Store into a Cube Smart Self-Storage Class A Climate Facility, two-story facility with an addition for loading, drive-through, and drive-out on the back with a controlled gate in front of the building, allowing our customers only to access in and out, access out of the site with controlled hours, operated by Cube Smart National Rate First-Class Facility, operator 24/7 in terms of call centers, and in terms of sales office, they'll have sales office hours from 9:00 to 6:00. And I imagine most folks are familiar with self-storage in terms of perhaps use and going online or going into sales office. In terms of the operations itself of the facility, there will be no storage of chemicals and flammables, and, you know, those things are all governed by leases, month-to-month leases that are signed by tenants and clients interested in, you know, providing their goods into those spaces. So, in terms of, you know, certain questions you may have, additional questions, happy to answer those as well as presentations.
Okay, we'll just take one second and look at the plan. This is a zoning lot, it's currently one zoning lot, we're proposing to subdivide it into north and south. As you can see, the shaded area along the south and the east, there will be naturalized plantings that will be held and provided along the property line. We have had communication with the neighbors, particularly from the condo association to the east, and we are going to be improving the landscaping both on our side of the property and on the other side of the fence, to really enhance the aesthetics and make sure that the view is shielded of the rear of the building, and they seemed happy with it. They, we didn't have any, we were not aware of any serious opposition, everyone was supportive. Next slide, please. This gives you a better idea of how you get in the site. As Mr. Schwartz said, you enter off of Orland Park Road, you go in, there's a gate right at the corner of the building, and it's one-way, you just basically go to the east. You can either unload on the south side of the building, or you could go around the corner and unload adjacent to the building to the east. The fence line will continue all along the property line, and then to the south, we have the pond in that area. The land, the plant in the north, which is the next slide, does, well, this is a landscape plant in the south, and then if we could go to the landscape plant in the north, which is the next slide, basically, they're going to supplement their landscaping to provide more than they're there. Both the owner of the north and south have agreed to provide a dedicated sidewalk along Orland Park Road, to provide better pedestrian access to the site with enhanced landscaping. Next slide, please. The elevations, basically, the building is going to have some changes to identify Cube Smart and their logo, but largely, the site is, remains as is, just mainly a cleanup to make it look better with new awnings, new lighting, and to better transition the middle parcel with the parcels to the north with the existing tenants. Next slide, please. And then this is just the plat of subdivision that shows the two lots that will be created this evening. So, we are available if you have any questions. We really appreciate the help of staff, who've been terrific, Steve and Mai, who were so, and Ann, who are so grateful for your assistance, and we would really appreciate your support this evening.
Steve, I just have a couple of questions. Parking requirements, like seven or eight spots, right?
Yeah, we determined the parking was fairly low, so this will help balance off the other portions.
Yeah, so that's perfect, given the fact that we have Gizmos and we have huge parking issues over there, it's a perfect fit. Sidewalk is a great enhancement along there, so that's awesome, as well as the landscape. And then I just want to confirm, there's no outdoor storage allowed, correct?
No outdoor storage, correct.
Okay, yeah, so, me personally, you know, we're trying to convert retail into different uses. This is taking 80,000 square feet of retail off into a great use in a corner that's not really all that visible or usable for retail, not to mention the parking benefits, as well as the landscaping benefits, so I think this is an outstanding use for the Village of Orland Park. So, I've been hearing about this for several years, so I'm glad it's finally coming to fruition. So, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Yeah, I agree with everything, it sounds great, I just, I actually have a question for Deputy Chief. We have one of these, maybe more, in Orland. Any unique challenges, safety-wise, you know, from you, that we need to just be aware of, not that it's going to cause any issues with us, but?
No, we have no calls for service at the existing facilities.
Thanks.
Yeah, and even the one by us, which allows a lot of outdoor storage, which is a whole nother animal, there's no issues ever over there, and I've actually stored some stuff there, and it was great.
And we have 24/7 video surveillance. Mr. Mayor.
I think I heard you say there's lock-in, lock-out, I've seen those before, you have to be, you have to have a, be a renter to be able to get in and out of it, everything, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just had a question, how many of your buildings are freestanding versus attached that you have in your portfolio?
We've done 16 projects. I would say this might be the second one of our projects that would have an attachment, you know, similar to this, but there's a firewall, complete separation, we're subdividing the parcels, so it was set up, so to speak, in terms of choosing. We're subdividing the parcels, so it was set up, so to speak, in terms of two, two sort of independent buildings, even though it was one larger home, one larger building in the way of homemakers back in the day in terms of warehousing and so.
I just have a concern. You mentioned you wouldn't allow chemicals of any nature in there, but that's kind of a hard thing to police, right? I mean, I know you have cameras, you could probably see if people are moving, you know, grills.
Couple things. Number one, it's governed by leases, so when you sign your lease with a national party as such as Cube Smart, they've got over 1,300 stores, they have legal contracts, they have, you know, inspections. At the end of the day, we also have fire control and sprinklers, et cetera, governed by the village's code. So at the end of the day, you know, you're not allowed to, they have their own insurance and or they buy supplemental insurance, so it's standard practice in terms of not allowing folks to have dangerous or nuisance, you know, elements.
Do you do any random checks on units that you think somebody might be not abiding by their lease?
There's always the option for the third-party manager to have the ability to inspect if there's an issue, you know, if there was some water damage or something, they can get notice to a tenant and or no police, fire, presumably from time to time, might need access. That is an emergency-type basis, and they can provide notice, so there's governing rules for that.
Okay, I just have a concern because the businesses that are joined this have a heavy occupancy load, and there's a lot of children in those businesses. So if something did go astray, you know, with the storage unit, I mean, there's a lot of people under that one roof, you know, at any given time, with Gizmos, with the gym, and with Skyzone, as we both all know here, high occupancy. So that, that is a real concern for me.
Yep.
So, Steve, this meets all of our fire codes, correct?
Yeah, once the plans are approved, it will meet all, yes, all the fire codes. They've put the firewall in. That was done, I think, prior to this project starting, so that was done in advance, so there's a good fire break between, right along the property line, the proposed property line, which goes through the building.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
You had mentioned the office hours are nine to six, but will the renters be able to get their, get in and out 24/7, or will they only during office hours?
No, the office hours are for the office operations, but in terms of the facility, it's typically not a six to 10 at night in terms of control, and that's seven days a week.
Okay, so at the latest, it would be 10 o'clock at night?
Right. There are occasions where there might be one or two tenants limited in terms of a 24-hour service, and that would be somebody on an emergency basis, a plumber or somebody who has some absolute need to get into the community or serve the community, but short of that, everyone's limited, and that's six to 10 operations.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we have 24-hour surveillance throughout the facility as well on the outside. That's all monitored and carefully watched, so.
Any other comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Look forward to having you there.
Trustee Malani says aye too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trustee Malani said aye as well, for the record.
66 Orland Square Drive, Units 1 and 2, Class 7C Resolution, Pearl Street Commercial LLC.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Compass?
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Supporting and Consent to a Cook County Class 7C Real Estate Tax Assessment Classification for the Property Located at 66 Orland Square Drive in the Village of Orland Park."
Second. For those of you who don't know what a Class 7C is, basically, Cook County taxes businesses and residents different. So, well, a resident, you'll see, it's 10% of your assessed value. For businesses, 25% of your assessed value. So what a Class 7C does, it brings it down to 10% for a period of time for when businesses move in, so it's an incentive to try and get businesses to, to enter vacant locations and give them a little bit of a tax break upfront. It's something that we pretty standardly approve to just about every business that comes through here. I don't ever recall us not passing one of these because the taxes are so onus on businesses here in Cook County. Any comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Okay.
An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapter 3, Section 14 and 15 of the Orland Park Municipal Code Regarding Application Fees for Billiard, Massage Establishment, and Tobacco Licenses.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll entertain a motion to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Call or roll?
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
You have to motion to approve it.
Trustee Healy?
No, I was unaware that you were going to remove that from the agenda.
No, not from the agenda. We put it back on the agenda. It was, it was tabled at the last meeting, so I just put it back on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So I was going to use so that you could motion it.
Okay, so here's my motion. I approve to approve, I move to approve the entering into a five-year contract with the same terms as the existing agreement with United, whoops, I'm sorry.
That's not the right one.
I'm a step ahead, not behind. Okay.
It's an Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapters 3, 14, and 15. You got that one?
Okay, strike my previous comments.
Okay, gotcha.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapters 3, 14, and 15 of the Orland Park Municipal Code Regarding the Application Fees for Billiard, Massage Establishment, and Tobacco Licenses Issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois."
Second. And clearly, Bill, we're very senior-friendly here. Are there any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for doing the research on this. 75 did look a little light at the last meeting, so thank you very much, George and staff, for looking at the true hours that are spent on these applications so that the village is reimbursed accordingly. Thank you.
And in case anybody's wondering what this is about, so we're making a $275 non-refundable application fee for billiard, massage, and tobacco license applications. We get a, we get a lot of these, a lot of these that we're, that our staff knows the board is not going to approve. We tell people, and they want to go ahead and go forth anyways because there's really no cost to them. And so now we're making sure that our staff's time is not wasted, and, you know, people are free to apply anytime they want, of course, but the staff's time, you know, the people of Orland Park deserve to have the staff's time accounted for, and the staff is very fair about telling people, you know, what they believe will happen with the board. And we have, we have approved licenses for these before, and we will again, but this way, staff is fully reimbursed, or the village and the residents are fully reimbursed for our staff's time. Any other comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Gymnastics Contract Renewal?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Compass?
I move to approve entering into a five-year contract with the same terms as the existing agreement with United Gymnastics Academy, UGA, earning 75% of gross gymnastics revenues at the resident rate for recreational gymnastics, and 85% of the gross revenues at the resident rate for team gymnastics, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any questions or comments? The only thing I noticed here is we're getting rid of the team component because of a lack of coaches.
Correct.
And we're comfortable with that?
We are. We don't have that much participation in that program.
Okay, great. Call or roll?
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Turf Tank Autonomous Field Painter Lease?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I move to approve entering into a 60-month lease agreement with Turf Tank LLC for a Turf Tank One Autonomous Field Painter at an annual cost of $15,000 per year, plus a one-time setup fee of $1,500, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review. Second.
And just so people know, this is to allow us to paint a lot of our fields with one person instead of a three-person crew, so that we can get our fields more up to speed quicker, which is pretty important. The, the, mining them the first time takes the longest amount of time, but this will allow us to keep doing this. The nice thing about a lease is if it doesn't work out, we can cancel it at any time, and then if you look at the purchase option, it's really not much of a difference in cost, if any at all. Just a few thousand dollars, so it makes more sense to not take the risk for something we're not, where we don't know anything about yet, other than we've heard from, there's many places that use this that are very happy with it.
Correct.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Compass?
No, just as someone that's an enthusiast of automation, usually driving my wife nuts with bar-home automation, and may have arrived here in an automated car, but I'd love to see the device in action when you, when you first deploy it, right?
Make sure we do some demos and potentially put it on social media as well. We're pretty excited.
And you can, you can go there and help program it too.
All for it.
Call or roll?
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Parking Fair Terminals Annual Maintenance Approvals 2023 through 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Reardon?
I move to approve the service and maintenance contract for parking terminals and Flowbird Web Office Monitoring Contract for Multi-Space Parking Terminals provided by Total Parking Solutions, Inc. of Donner's Grove, Illinois for a period of three years, 23 to 25, and I move to authorize the village manager to execute necessary contracts and documents subject to attorney, or village attorney review.
Second. Any other comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Raschesewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens or visitors?
Now you can come on up. Yep. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. So do I need to give my information again, or?
Uh, no, we have it here.
Okay. So when I came in, I, I heard William Healy speaking about the library, so I, I want to know further what he, what his concerns are, because as a parent, I do have my concerns too. I've been hearing stories about what they're doing in libraries, and I just don't feel comfortable with what they're doing. A family member told me that in Chicago, a public library, they were doing storytime, drag. I don't know if you heard about it, but they're doing it in libraries for little kids, and I feel like that's very inappropriate. And I would like to know if this is the concerns that you were talking about, William Healy?
Is that all you want, is that all you want to comment on?
I just want to know, like, if it's happening over here. I haven't been to the library myself, but it just concerns me because it's happening in different places, and I would like to know if there's anything being done, or has it been discussed? Has there been any concerns from other parents regarding that?
Yeah, we don't engage usually in back and forth, so go ahead and make your comments, and we'll decide if we, we don't usually answer those, your questions, but this one we can answer. Do you have any other comments? Or was that, was that your question? Was that what you?
That was my question. I just wanted to know what the concerns were.
All right, great, thank you. I can address that. So what Trustee Healy was talking about was not that. He was talking about an upcoming referendum that's on and had nothing to do with that. Regarding the subject that you're talking about, I have made a public statement about that in a different, that happened in a different town. That was at a different time and not related to Orland Park, but I made a comment about it being inappropriate to my knowledge, and believe me, if it was happening at the Orland Park Library, I think we would all have something to say about it. At the end of the day, none of us, there's a separate library board that handles the library board, library. It's not the village. The village has no control over the library, but to our knowledge, none of that is happening at the library, and if something like that were happening at the library, the, at least myself, and I'm pretty sure all of our trustees would, would speak out against that. So, but I'm not aware of anything like that happening at our library at this time.
But still, he, he mentioned that he had concerns, so I'd just like to know what those concerns are.
It was about the referendum that we, so there was a referendum, that's what we were talking about earlier. There's a referendum that's on the ballot for April 4th, and the question is, shall we retain our current form of government? There was individuals talking about that, and they were comparing our current form of government to a different form of government, which is not the form of government that we would go to if, if we did not retain our form of government. We would actually go to a village trustee format. So that's what his concerns were, is that the public was being given misinformation about what they were actually voting on. Thank you. Trustee Reardon?
For board comments?
Yep.
Yep. Couple things. Dave, congratulations. Good luck in your next endeavors. Only got to know you a couple of years, but very helpful, and thank you for all your hard work. Police Department, congratulations on the ILEAP. I really hadn't heard about that, you know, getting here only two years, but that's fantastic. That's a rigorous criteria, it sounds like, to, you know, for that accomplishment. So congratulations, and not surprised at all that you are getting that accreditation. I had the pleasure of watching the mayor play basketball a couple of weeks ago at the.
Played.
Now that I know the game, I might actually play next year, but it was very fun. The Owls Special Rec Department has their end-of-year basketball game where they play against some staff, and the mayor played, and it was a lot of fun, looking at the smiles on the parents' faces. I mean, the kids obviously are going to have a good time no matter what, but I really really think the parents appreciate it, and we certainly appreciate the staff, you know, that put those things on for them. So that was great. And then, you know, a lot of information here, and I know the development, or the planning commission development, spending a lot of times on our fields and Centennial Park West, and I just want to make a couple of comments that I think this shows exactly what we're trying to do as a board, is we're trying to touch all the various aspects of Orland Park and what people use and how they enjoy Orland Park. We've, you know, we've tackled roads and parks and ponds, and, you know, these are two big projects, and some people might look at the price tag to some of these, but you got to look at, you know, a little bigger picture about why we're doing these things for the long-term enjoyment and growth. So I think they're great projects, and we're looking forward to getting them underway and getting them completed. So that's all. Happy spring.
Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss today if I didn't have a history reference. Today is the anniversary of the Alamo, which, you know, sometimes we all feel like we've been at the Alamo in certain fights, but it was a great American defeat, but at the same time, the sacrifice of Davy Crockett, Jim Bowie, and the others inspired a lot of people to build this country.
And you were a kid back then, right?
I missed that one. It's also the anniversary of Nancy Reagan's death, so I'll just throw that out there, too. To the, to the, the lady with the, I am concerned about libraries similar to you, and the trend in libraries is not good all over, including some things you see in the Orland Library. I mean, just with the social tendencies and that, they're all too permissive and willing to accept crazy ideas, and it's bad. The, my final comments have to do with public service and some people in public service. There's three instances where I have learned a lot of respect for some professionals in the public service community. The election board that I appeared before, the Illinois Election Board, in dealing with them, there were two gentlemen who, for reasons I can't say, won't be named, but they were just so professional, so even-handed, and so independent, which they should be. And it was a pleasure dealing with them and, you know, letting them give me some of their comments, but it was, it inspired me that people at the state thing are very fair and, you know, very, more than reasonable. The second thing ironically is the head of the library, who I dealt with today on some difficult issues concerning campaigning in the library, and it was difficult for her, but she handled herself very professionally. She was very, very willing to listen, willing to, you know, consider and take action, very mature attitude on it. And despite our differences on other issues at the library, Mary Adamowski is, you know, was, takes her role seriously, and I think she's, she's strong and pleasant at the same time, which drives me crazy. So it's, and then finally, Dave Buick, you know, the commitment to professionalism in this public service sector was amazing. The job you tackled and completed successfully was, I just think amazing. I was, you know, few of us are witnesses to the complete struggle, but man, that was, that was some job you did, Dave. We're going to miss you. Thanks.
Trustee Rascheski?
Dave, we had an opportunity to work together. I was on the Technology Commission, and I really enjoyed that experience and, you know, got to see all the different projects and everything that you handled. And, I mean, you really had your hands full. You did a lot, and you did a really great job. So thank you for all that you've done for the village, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and congratulations to the police on the ILEAP. And also, I was with Brian, watching the mayor play basketball. It was a really fun, really, really fun event. Maybe next year I'll move and both play. It was good. Thank you for all of your hard work on it.
Trustee Compass?
Good evening. I'd also like to congratulate Chief Rossi, Deputy Chief West, and the entire Orland Park Police Department. As Mayor Peacock said very well, we all know that you're the best in the state, but it's always nice to see external validation, especially from your peer group. Well-learned, well-deserved. I'd also like to say, you know, to folks that, you know, see what's going on around us, right? Not just within our community, but surrounding our community. Police can't be everywhere, right? I'd love nothing more than to put a bubble around Orland Park. Our police set the standard and are deterrents to crime, but they are not an absolute prevention, right? But where we do stand tall and set the standard is in follow-through. And the amount that we invest in our investigations, in our closure rates, in the evidence that we bring to the state's attorney's office and others to make sure that the criminals that we catch are put behind bars. So I'd just like to say thank you again, chief. I know that recent times it's been a little bit tougher, but we'll be getting Chief Rossi back, and I expect you'll be happy to see him return as well. But again, congratulations. And then on a lighter note, I do have a recognition for two folks in our staff from our National Resources and Facilities, our NRF department, our operations manager and foreman, Mike Maza and Scott Hilland. Mike joined the Village of Orland Park in May 2014, while Scott has served since March 2002. In the midst of hectic, ever-changing schedules, both men consistently demonstrate nothing less than excellence on a daily basis. Their pleasant disposition, ability to face tough challenges head-on, and constant readiness to adapt to changing initiatives leave Mike and Scott to be admired by their subordinates and peers. Each gentleman has grown professionally within the organization and continues to put in long hours, demonstrate promptness, efficiency, and unsurpassed dedication to the village and the community. Mike Maza and Scott Hilland work hard to maintain and support all of us on a daily basis. We would like to thank them for their dedication, support, and the unparalleled service that they provide. So thank you, Mike and Scott. That's it for me. Thank you.
Trustee Malani?
I'm surprised Trustee Healy didn't mention this, but today is Casimir Pulaski Day for those that celebrate.
He's Irish.
Yeah. Details. But we heard about some good things tonight, like to welcome Cube Smart to Orland Park, and also glad to hear that we're making progress on Schuschler Park. I think that's going to be great once that's finished, and I think everybody that uses that park's going to appreciate the improvements. Couple events that are coming up, want to remind people about the Lucky Egg Hunt Saturday, April 1st at 10:00 a.m. at Centennial Park. That's always a fun day, rain or shine. And on Saturday, April 22nd is our Night of Chartourery and Wine. 200 to 300 tickets have already been sold, so get them while they're hot. Other than that, enjoy your evenings and have a great week.
For those of us who are in Chicago, April 22nd, that's the Meat and Cheese Night.
The Meat and Cheese Fest. Yes, sir.
Trustee Katzinas?
Just a reminder, the Orland Park has their 2023 Family Health Fair. It's going to be held on Saturday, March 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Sportsplex. It's always a great event. And I too wanted to say thank you, Dave. And not only, you know, did you do an outstanding job, but you always did it with a smile on your face and a willingness to help everyone. So I thank you for that. Also, we have another person in the room who it's its last meeting as well, Deputy Chief West. Our chief will be back in two weeks, so thank you for coming to the meetings and sharing information with us. Thank you, DC.
Thank you. Dave, I'll echo what I said earlier. Great work. I appreciate it. You're the first of all of the new directors, and you've done a great job and transitioned our technology. You know, in, like I talked about earlier, we were so far behind, it was ridiculous. We started a technology commission, and who knew that that was a stepping stone to the board? Trustee Compass, Trustee Malani, Trustee Rascheski, all started off in the tech commission. So beware of those of you on the tech commission. You could be next. The, so in closing, so first off, we talked about this a little bit in the COW. Residents deserve facts. That's what we're here for. It really concerns me when two former employees, one who was a village manager, one who was assistant village manager, start giving information that's inaccurate. Now, one of them was before my time. He moved here for the job. He left here after the job, moved to Texas. But to compare the vote choice to a mayor council form of government is just not true. So we will get those facts out there. The other one I can't talk about, because she was actually an employee under my time, I just want to thank Homer Glenn. So I also want to thank the staff and the board for all that they've done in the last four years in particular, and maybe even five years if it goes back a little bit, but the board's done a lot in the last four. So we lost five anchors six months into my term, or eight months into my term in February 2018. We lost Carson's, we lost Sears, we lost Carson's Home Goods, we lost Toys R Us, and Babies R Us. About 550,000 square feet of retail in one month, and welcome to being mayor, by the way. And we replaced it almost immediately with Von Mauer. We did have something going into Sears. Unfortunately, COVID killed that, but now we see something in the Carson's. We already have the Toys R Us that have been redeveloped, and also the Babies R Us has had something move in there and expand. So the only thing we have left is the Sears location, and, you know, we're hopeful that that'll get done. But, you know, that speaks volumes for Orland Park to see 60%, well, 80% of the stores, but 60% of the space reoccupied in relatively short order. I know it doesn't seem like relatively short order when it's been four years, but when you consider that you had two years of COVID, when retailers were just reeling, that really does say a lot for Orland Park. And so I want to thank the staff and the board for all their help on that. Also approving Schuschler Park. Long time coming. A reminder, since these, since the three trustees who've been here for four years have been here, we've restored 26 parks. Before that, we were doing, we had done one every other year back to 2000. So 26 parks we've done in that time. That doesn't include John Humphrey, which has also been done, Schuschler, which will be done by the end of the year, and Centennial Park West, which will be done by the end of the year. So you think about that. By the end of the year, we will have done 26 renovations, John Humphrey Complex, Schuschler, Centennial Park West, all since 2019, in four years. So great work by this board. And the pioneers, and remember, a lot of this was blocked before you guys got here. This is the first thing we did was start approving these things. And the pioneers, the movement was blocked as well. And so the pioneers will actually have a home that's built for them for the first time in 50 years. They will have a practice facility designed for them, which was probably something that we've missed with our other park additions over the years, and so they'll actually have a place. And the nice thing is that field will always be able to be used by soccer, by lacrosse, and other field sports. Also, I want to remind people, you know, of other great things that this staff and sport's done. Our roads, in 2017, our roads, 40% of them were in poor condition. Now it's 17%. With the plan we have going forward, it'll be 5%, five years from now. That's because of the, what this, what this board and these trustees have done to get things done. So they weathered a lot to make sure it got done, and so you can thank them for that. Remember also that the three trustees that have been here for four years reduced pay, eliminated pensions for elected officials, so, and didn't take any pensions either. So done that as well. And transparency. See this? And I realize we had some glitches at first, but you see the technology we have here? When I arrived here, nothing was on video. Nothing was on audio. When I tried to put it on video, I was blocked. It took Trustee Healy, Trustee Katzinas, and Trustee Malani stepping up and saying immediately, we're going to put these things on video so that everyone can see it. And I realize maybe only 100 people watch it, but if you want to watch it, you can. You can always go back and look and see what's done, and that's what transparency in government's all about. So I also want to comment Ed Schuschler, interim mayor here, as well as a longtime board member and longtime resident, who's, you know, part of the Schuschler family, that Schuschler Park is named after his, I believe, his uncle. And he commented about the great customer service he got today in finance, or questioned an issue that he had, and he said, "That didn't used to happen." This, we have really good people here working and focusing on customer service, which has been an emphasis of the board and of George and of our staff, and so thank you very much for emphasizing that. I can't say enough about the police in ILEAP. You know, I know it was, we're 1 of 20, but we're 1 of 1. We're the best department in the state. Special Rec, it's the only place where I can go and miss all my shots, and everybody's happy. So I really enjoy that. I'm glad I could come again, and it was back open to everybody. So I look forward to that every year. And lastly, and I know he'll be upset that I bring this up, but I want to thank Rich Miller and Leo for what they do, because it's not publicized, it's not on social media. He didn't want it there, but when unfortunately an officer was killed in Chicago, he was there with that family that night. And it meant a lot to that family, so much so that they want, that they've asked him to be there for other things going forward. But sometimes we forget that the toll that takes on Rich, having to be there for all of those people in all those events. So when you see him, and when people out there in the public see him, thank him for what he does, because it's not easy, because he's there through a lot of people's grief, which is not easy. It's not easy to see all that. So thank him for what he does, and we know we all love Leo, and Rich is great with him, but sometimes we forget about the human toll that has on the handler of Leo. So make sure you thank him for what he does. So with that, I want to thank everyone for all they do here in Orland Park, and we can go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Compass?
Move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, C, pending litigation against affected or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. Call or roll?
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Katzinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Rascheski?
Aye.
Mayor Peacock?
Aye.
Go into executive session.